Good afternoon, everyone. I will call a meeting to order. We will stand for prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the life and breath that you give us in this day as we are here to, to work through the tasks that we have or that we're tasked with as a city council, give us the wisdom and guidance to, to make the proper decisions. Thank you for the safety, Lord, over this city, those you provide to, to give us safety. Over this St. Patrick's Day holiday, I just pray again, continue over the weekend and then through tonight, just over this community, Lord, that there just would be, your protection and guidance, Lord, overall, and that, again, as this community, we just continue to grow and we bloom together. And we ask for your guidance as well for the city manager process as we're looking to, to fill that position. And just pray for the, the right person, Lord, give us the wisdom and knowledge, all who are involved in this. And even for the right person to apply, put it on their heart, Lord, to, to apply for this position if, if indeed be your will. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim City Manager, you want to call the roll?
Okay. Jerrance. Jer.
Yes.
Okay. Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Holene? Absent. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time and place for the open. Is anybody here to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda? Anybody online? Seeing none, we'll move right to the agenda. Look for a motion to approve the agenda. First by Shuddy, second by Peters. Any other questions? Take a voice vote on the agenda. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries. And go right to 9A. Contracts and change orders. Acknowledgement of the FFA, FAA, excuse me, Airport Infrastructure Grant, AIG application for hangar taxi line expansion, in amount of $570,000. And with that, Ian Meriwether, our Airport Director. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Councilman. So as of right now, the status is pending and we don't have any concrete direction as to whether or not the federal government is going to subsidize this project. They're still in determination with that. So unfortunately, I don't have any other answer for you other than it's a waiting game at this point. I can't say one way or another if it looks good or bad, but early indications is we might not get the funding for this project.
Kristen?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so essentially what we're looking for here is just for the council to approve the, the application for the grant and then if we would receive the grant to essentially accept that grant. So.
Okay, I'll look for a motion. Motion by Danforth, second by Shuddy. Any other discussion? Ian, I do have a question for you. What, what happens if we don't get the grant?
It doesn't really go anywhere. It just, yep.
So it's not going to affect the everyday operation of the?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I think we can do a voice vote on that. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Yes. Yes. Ian, can you come back up here? Councilman Danforth has a question for you.
Yeah, I, I hope this isn't wrong to do this, but I, I'm being asked a lot right now, Ian, as long as you're up here. Where are we at in the whole airline decision, timing? Because people are, are asking me, and I'm probably the least person to, to answer to this, but they're kind of concerned, where do they book and how do they book and if they book tickets? Where's that whole thing at and when would we get a decision and, and a official date?
I've been asked those questions too numerous times and unfortunately, it's all in the hands of the DOT at this point. And I check it multiple times a day on the weekends, even though that's not going to come in on the weekend, but I want to know as soon as possible. And so I can disseminate that to, A, our traveling community, but the council as well.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, let's move on to 9B. Approval of bid award for the private hangar area expansion project, project number 2423, to Webster scale, in amount of 300, just shy of 350,000, pending FAA grant or adjusted.
Thank you, Council. This, this bid award kind of goes with the grant application that we just approved. It's for the, the private hangar expansion area, which is kind of circled on the screen here. We got really good bids, four bids, just under 350,000 to Webster scale. It was under, it was 15% lower than the engineer's estimate. And staff recommends approval pending grant approval by the FAA. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Look for a motion. By Peters, second by Shuddy. Councilman Peters.
Justin, did you say that we have to, if we approve it, it's still subject to the FAA's grant approval? Okay, all right, sounds good. Thanks.
Anybody else? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you. Deputy Mayor Tupper, you had a good question on the other one. What happens if we don't get it? What happens if we don't get this? Are, are both of these projects such that we don't get grants, we don't do them, and, and if we don't do them, what's the longer term? I'm assuming these are a need. So if we don't, if they are in fact a need and we don't get the grants, when does it get addressed? Is it the next go around on grant applications or what is it?
Director Meriwether?
Yeah, so if the, the program or the grant doesn't get funded, we simply don't move on with the project. However, the spaces, we're, we're at capacity right now for hangar. So yes, in time, we would need to address that again, if that's the direction that the council wants to go.
So that means we would direct it within, solely within our budget?
Correct.
But what's the timing that, that might be the need if we were to go down this path? Is it a year from now? Is it two years from now?
Earliest would be a year from now, but then I'd have to look at what other projects that we have in line, just make sure that everything fits in with our budgetary concerns.
What if it doesn't? What happens to these? Because this is on the new build, right?
Correct.
Okay, so obviously in order for us to lease them out or whatever we do, this has got to be done, correct?
Right, and there, we weren't able to have an airport board meeting this month just because people are out and doing personal matters. However, we have other options we can explore. If people are really motivated, maybe we can compartmentalize it. And so, you know, that is a financing question of how the tenants want to move forward, but as far as the FAA funding portion, it just wouldn't be, it would be out of stance. The project wouldn't exist. Or we can rebid it if we get additional direction from the FAA. It's kind of, we want to know why they are denying the grant rather than just accepting a, no, we're not going to do the project. That way we know how to move forward.
What's the split ratio on this?
It would be 90, federal, five.
Five, five.
Yep, five, five.
Thank you, Ian. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Did we have somebody online that wanted to speak? Okay, anybody else get a question? Interim City Manager, will you take the roll?
Yes. Jerrance?
Yes.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 9C is approval of bid award for the 25, 2025 Park and Recreation Improvement Bike Trail Overlay Project Number 2509, to Bose Construction, Inc. of Brookings, in the amount of just shy of $310,000. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you again. On the screen is a map of the project. It is an overlay project for bike trail from 14th Avenue down to Willow Creek Drive, or just about to Willow Creek Drive. We, we also got several bids for this one. The low bid was from Bose Construction out of Brookings. It was about 17% lower than the engineer's estimate. And for this project, I'll note that this, there was a, a grant that was previously awarded, so in the amount of 160,000. So with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Look for a motion. First by Danforth, second by Peters. Any other discussion? Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, Mr. Peterson, so would you happen to know when this project was first done, when this was first? I guess I'm curious on the lifespan of these, of these trails and the, now's a good time to ask the question, even for the public. You know, is it a five-year, eight-year, 10-year turnaround time?
I don't know that answer. I can get to you. Yeah, I have.
Okay.
I don't know.
Sure, sure. Director Rodick? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any specific on when that trail was constructed. I want to think, if I recall from the grant application, it might around, been around 2010-ish. So we're looking 15 years. A lot of it depends on the soil types, the construction at the time, you know, the one that we had done last year, I believe it was, along Highway 20. That trail had been in place for 25 years, you know, and probably had same or maybe less impact than the one we're looking at doing this year. So it really varies.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Danforth?
This is a curiosity question and I'll just leave it up to any one of you over there, but historically, if we look back at who's done our, our maintenance and these overlays, has that historically come from out of town or is that, has that been done locally? And I'm not, I'm not questioning that one or the other, just, I'm just trying to understand where the market's at, what might be driving certain things and, and.
I'm, I'm not aware of how much renovation has been done in the past. I know last year it was local, this year outside.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody online? Seeing none. Interim City Manager, do the roll, please.
Okay. Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to 10A, Ordinance and First Readings. First reading ordinance 25-04, revise ordinance of the City of Watertown to amend ordinance Title V. City Engineer Justin Peterson.
Thank you. Staff has been reviewing ordinances and Title V is before you today as first reading. There's really just a handful of items that are clarifications based off questions that we've had in the past. There's some recommended changes by MuniCode when they reviewed it and some clarifications with the flood damage protection that was based off some comments from FEMA back when we did our CRS review. So just putting those clarifications in the, in the ordinance. With that, stand by for questions.
Look for a motion. Oh, there's just first reading. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes. Councilman Danforth?
Mr. Peterson, during our CL Lake ordinance review, the zoning discussions that our committee had, on a number of occasions, there was always the issue of, of water quality, filling in, non-protected areas for, for development use. Is there anything within this update here that, that goes to that issue? It, it, what we emphasized during our time, as, as Councilman Peters would, would know as well and Councilman Jerrance, is we always deflected on that and said, that's not the purpose of our committee. We're purely looking at zoning. But without question, there has to come a point when we look at how we develop, what we allow for development as, and, and how that compares to ownership rights as it relates to these low areas. The issue, for example, the one that keeps coming up is Toby's Loop. And so is there anything within this that pertains to that or not?
None of these changes would address.
In any way, shape, or form?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to understand it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we will move on to, we have nothing under public hearings and second readings, so we'll move on to other business. 12A, Approval of Resolution 25-02, the plat of Harmony Hill, BUD First Edition, to municipality of Watertown in County, County, South Dakota, and authorize the interim city manager enter into a private road agreement. Community Development Manager, Hampton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this resolution before you or plat is really, well, it's for the Harmony Hill, PUD First Edition, and it is, it could have been approved administratively, but there was the inclusion of a private street for, to, to provide access to the lot from Challenger Way and Prairie Park Trail. And then with that private street, then there's a requirement to have the private street maintenance agreement, which is where council needs to authorize the interim city manager to sign. It's all very general standard language that we use. And in the future, to this lot, per their concept plan, will be expanded to the south and then it will have access to a public ride of way. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Look for a motion. By Shuddy, second by Danforth. Any other discussion? I do have one question. Who's going to do the maintenance on that? Are we?
No, the.
Private development, right?
Yep.
Do the maintenance, okay?
Yep.
Any other questions? Councilman Shuddy.
I mean, I know they answer any, but it fits all our designs. I mean, it's basically, it's a little narrower road, you're saying, than, than what we would recommend for a public access, correct?
Yep. And then they also do not have to have curb and gutter with a private street. So it's really in essence a driveway. But it will provide the access to the lot. And then it was also extended over to the west to the cemetery lot as well. Just the real idea behind that is that there's nothing landlocked.
And so, yeah, that's a standard procedure, you're saying, on a road like that, so.
Yep.
Yep, all right, thanks.
Anybody else? Seeing none, you want to take the roll call, please.
Okay. Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to 12B. Approval of 28-foot public access easement through the city property to allow for secondary access, pros project on the northwest corner of Willow Creek Drive and 28th Street. That will go to City Engineer Justin Peterson and Community Development Manager, Brandy Hampton.
Sounds good. All right, I'll take this one. So this is a little unique request that we had come before staff and through my division, Engineering Division, and then Park and Rec, we all discussed. And so this area here is a small triangular piece of city property between 28th Street Southeast or on the corner of 28th Street Southeast and Willow Creek Drive. 28th Street Southeast is what extends up to the new ice arena. So, and this is also within the area of what will be overlaid for the trail project that we just discussed. But no, not that, well, just to that portion. Yeah, yeah, and I saw that on the map. So it, it's just beyond that segment that will be resurfaced. So we have this piece of city property. The bike trail runs through it, but then the request is for there to be secondary access through this area here shown on the map for the 28-foot easement. This would be a private street easement that would be at the responsibility of the developer who's interested in the lot here to the west to do any upgrades or improvement or installation. There also, we have cited the location based on engineering design standards and having proper setback from street intersections between Willow Creek Drive and where it intersects 28th. And then making sure that there's sufficient space there for stacking and whatnot off of 28th, which is also a collect, or a minor collector's street. The real, the general idea here with why staff is bringing this or recommending this is for economic development purposes. And the fact that this is a corner lot that doesn't have the accessibility to another street other than through this city property that is otherwise unusable, there's not buildable, sufficient buildable area. It obviously, we do have the, the recreational trail there, so it will intersect with the trail that is existing. But again, anything as far as drainage improvements, you know, having to meet certain grade slopes and whatnot for the bike trail, that all has to be at the expense of the developer. And the city would be just granting the easement for them to utilize that kind of bluish gray 28-foot easement area. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
City Engineer Peterson, do you have anything to add?
Just, Brandy mentioned it, but the, you know, any, any grading or anything drainage-wise, any repairs to the bike trail would, would be made by the developer, so.
Okay, with that, I look for a motion. By Shuddy, second. By Danforth. Any other discussion? Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the other lots along that northern perimeter there, they have, they'll be having access from Willow Creek, is that correct?
Yeah, the ones that, that are just to the north of Willow Creek Drive.
Right, they go along, you know, to the, to the west there. There's other, I'm not sure how many lots there are there. So they, they have access. So this one here, will this corner lot have access as well or that's going to be their only access from this, from the?
They will also access, they'll have access onto Willow Creek Drive and then, but the secondary access, because of the type of business that it is, they'll have a drive-through. So they were wanting secondary access. But yeah, otherwise, along Willow Creek Drive, they have, or they can, the driveways can be spaced 400 feet because we want to limit the access onto Willow Creek Drive as kind of a bypass route.
So I missed that nugget, I guess. So there was, because of the nature of the business, I was trying to figure out why a second access point, but because of the nature of that particular business?
Yep.
They say they need that. Okay.
And you can kind of see there on the site plan that I pulled up, how you, you'll pull in and then be able to loop. Oh. Shouldn't, don't I just share it on Teams?
Well, I can maybe help him.
Oh. Okay, perfect, yep. Okay. So, sorry about that. Yeah, if you see this schematic here where you, you get that loop. Otherwise, then on, like depending on this, whatever street it would be fronting, if they were able to have two accesses onto one street, but that's not allowable on Willow Creek Drive.
Councilman Peters?
I think I'm good. He kind of talked about it.
Okay. I do have one question. Is why 28 feet?
That's our standard private street width. So they wouldn't have to go 28 feet if they, it just, that's just the maximum. And it's actually, it's the minimum for a private street, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Hampton. I had the same question, Brandy, on that too, but, so let's just look at the flow here. So as I look at that drawing and you got the drive-through, is the drive-through coming in from the west or from the east off of the, this easement stretch?
Well, and I believe the developer is online for any of these specific questions. I would say that it is, oh.
Brandy, Brandy, yeah, this is Steve with Area Federal Credit Union. That has not been determined 100% yet. We don't have final drawings or anything because we're waiting to see if we get this approved, but. waiting to see if we get this approved. But it would more than likely would enter from Willow Creek and exit, and exit on the Twenty-Eighth.
Okay, let me ask him a question. So would that, would, would that path, road, driveway, whatever it is we're calling it, that, that goes on to, through the easement, is that considered a two-way path, or is that going to be a one-way path?
It would be considered a two-way. They could, they could, they could enter there too also, is what we would wish. Most of the traffic would probably not enter there, but they could enter and exit there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Leonard Bruce? Or should I say Councilman Jerrance and Bueller? Seeing none, do you want to take the roll call, interim manager?
Okay, Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, for considering Watertown as a new location, so.
You're welcome.
Twelve C, authorization for forestry division to purchase twenty-five forestry chipper truck in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, one ninety-seven fifty. Parking Rec Director Roddick.
Thank you. This is pretty straightforward. This is a replacement for, basically, when we got it, a utilities truck that had an aftermarket box put on that. And it's had challenges, electrical challenges from day one. So I believe that, the year on that is like two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, in that range. This came in roughly two thousand dollars under budget, and we're looking for approval.
With that, I'd look for a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Peter, second by Councilman Bueller. Any other discussion? I only have one question. Dusty, would the other one become surplus after that done?
Quite possibly. It's, part of it's going to depend on if we could get fully staffed on our forestry crew. If we could run two crews, we might limp that along a little, a little longer.
Okay, thank you. I think we can do a roll call, or a voice vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to thirteen, city council member announcement, introduction of topics for future discussion. Nobody have anything?
I might just say something.
Councilman Peters?
I was kind of off the cuff here a little bit. Well, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and I had a meeting earlier this week with a developer in town, and I won't name his name. But it was a great discussion. It was kind of along the lines of what can we do to be better? We've been hearing some frustrations about the development world out there, and, and how maybe some of us on this side of the table haven't been as pro-growth as, as they would like. I thought it was a great discussion. I guess I'm, I'm saying this because I would encourage other developers to reach out and let's sit down and chat. We spent, I don't know what, an hour?
At least, yep.
Just, I think we, we listened for most of it and talked a little bit, which is, which is great. So by all means, please reach out and tell us what we can be doing better. And if it's a development agreement issue, or if it's a communication issue, we'd, we'd like to hear about it. And the second thing is, I think it was you, me, and the mayor again, had a meeting with an, a business prospect, which is a little bit odd. I didn't think I'd be wearing my prospecting cap while wearing my city council cap. But there again, we want you to come to town. And, and there was announcement that Maxwell Foods, food hardware was closing down today. So if there's anything that we can be doing to, to help businesses in town, please let us know. That's all I have. Thanks.
Yes, they were both very, very, very interesting meetings. And, and I know you guys have all heard, both the mayor and myself, saying on the radio that, you know, we need to hear from the developers. We can only get better if we hear what problems we're facing. And, and we don't want to be anti-development. We want to work with everybody, because we want to see Watertown grow. So like I say, there were very, very good meetings. Anybody else? Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. As a result of the announcement that was made in regards to the, the event center and the hotel out there, I want to, I've been getting some phone calls on that. And the thing that we have to understand is, the transaction that is occurring is between two private entity individuals in, or businesses. On a sidebar, connected at the hip of that is the city, because we own the event center and, and the property underneath it. So discussions have taken, have taken place at, on a real light, high-end standpoint. But we need to get more into the, into the pockets of the, the new owner of the hotel and understand and work with them. And we, as a city, have got to figure out a plan for what we do and how we do in regards to the event center. So, but it, it, it's important that people understand these transactions take place all the time. And it just so happens that the, the Minerva's group and the current hotel ownership group, there's a lot of common ownership there, but it's not, they're separate entities. And so with their, their decision to, to sell the hotel, it was the right time for them to, to exit via termination of their lease, which, Chris, is what, July? Towards the end of July, I think? So what I would recommend, I'm getting phone calls from people wondering about their hotel reservations, about their events that they've, have in the, in the shorter term, as well as potentially the longer term. And my suggestion there is that you, you contact the hotel to find out what the plan is. They're going to be the ones most knowledgeable as far as your hotel reservations. And as far as the events, I think you need to, to work with them as well. From the city's standpoint, our expectation is that the, the current lease and the performance of that lease will occur until the end of the lease. So, but that is something, again, that we, we don't dictate, but we will be, we're concerned with and we are, are working with. So we are working to have a longer-term plan, and understanding, but it takes a little bit of time and patience because of the transaction and the availability of information. So just be patient, but be diligent if you are, if you have hotel rooms, call the hotel. If you've got events planned or planning, call them. And then, you know, stay in, in touch with them. And then it should come clear in the coming days and weeks, but it's going to take a bit for us to get through that, so.
Thank you, Councilman Danforth. Anybody else? Nobody else. I'll take time to do one here. This is a press release that was sent out on March fourteenth. City Watertown earns national recognition for excellence in financial reporting. The City of Watertown was honored by, with the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Office. This recognition awarded for the Watertown Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. The impartial panel reviewed the report, determined it met the program's high standards, including a spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the city's financial position and encourage public engagement with the report. This recognition reflects Watertown's commitment to transparency, accountability, and responsible financial management. This recognition highlights the dedication of the professionalism of our financial team, said Kristen Bobzine, interim city manager and chief financial officer. Their hard work ensures Watertown financial reporting remains accurate and transparent and accessible. Watertown has proudly received this award forty-two times, demonstrating a longstanding commitment to financial transparency. Transparency, especially when it comes to financial, is probably the most important part of a community. And my hat's off to you and all your staff. We couldn't do without you. It's kind of a, almost like we get it just about every year, but that's good. We, we just love those, those kind of recognitions, put it that way. So like I say, my hat's off to you and your staff. Anybody else like to jump on that, or?
I would do, Steve.
City manager report. Come on. We do have a reason to go into executive session for contractual reasons. I do not expect any action being taken after this. So if I can get you guys to stay in line for just a minute, we'll call out to you. And with that, I'll look for a motion to enter executive session.
I'll look.
Motion by Danforth, second by Peters. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Okay, do we?